Ready? All right, very good. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight's meeting, Wednesday, February 28, 2018. It is 6:30 p.m., and we are at room 320 of the multi-service center 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I want to call the meeting to order. I'm going to make a roll call for the members. We have my far-right member, Wilma Engerman, our town planner, Ken Buckland, our clerk, Jim Akabachi, my far-left associate member, Jake Morrison, attorney, Jen Kendrick, Carl Baptiste, and myself, the chair, Nazir Al-Kulasi. Also, we have tonight independent consultant, Paul Haverty, who's going to assist us with the comprehensive permit, and also present independent consultant, P.E., Charles Rowley, selectman chairman, Peter Titanbaum, attorney Peter Titanbaum, and we have Rich Bowen, town council somewhere here. Is David Pecuina here? He's not. Okay, we have some preliminary business to do first, and we'll get to business. Minutes.
I've already reviewed the minutes from last meeting, found no problems with them, and therefore moved to accept as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion on that? Are you here none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. So, 5:00, 00. Minutes are good. Okay, very good.
Certificate of completion.
Certificate of completion for Mike Harrington, Zero Square Island. Are they here? All right, let's table this to the end, all right? We'll table this to the end. Just see what happens. Okay.
Do we want to...
Let's go with the, we're gonna, we get, on the comprehensive permit, we're just gonna, just skip for five, 10 minutes. Is that all right, counselor? Mr. Freeman?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, we're just gonna go to the continued public hearing on 4617 Ramos Realty Trust, 300 Glen Charlie Road, that requested a continuance.
Does this ring in?
We can continue this till March 14.
Oh, they've already requested a continuance? Sorry.
Is that hearings open?
We did open it.
Was it open? All right.
So moved.
Okay, we can push, all right, so we request to continue this public hearing, 46-17, for Ramos Realty Trust, till March 14, 2018. Or, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Okay.
Jay Donigan.
On Donigan, are they here? Jay Donigan? All right, we'll table this too, to the end. Right, public hearing 2-18, comprehensive permit, Dakota Property, 3102 Cranberry Highway. I come forward, gentlemen.
This has not been read in yet, is that correct?
No.
Pursuant to authority found with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, subsection 20-23, Comprehensive Permit Act, the Wareham Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing, February 28, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Surface Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 2-18 for the construction of 174 rental dwelling units within six, three, and four-story buildings, along with a community building, open space area, and related parking. 106 of the dwelling units will be affordable housing. The property is located at 3102 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. That's on assess's map, 131 lot Q1 in the CS and R130 zoning district.
All right, you're gonna pursue with the hearing, right?
I'm sorry?
You're gonna, you're okay with the board? You have five members, you're gonna continue?
Yes, I was just going to ask, you have a five-member board?
We do.
And you have five, plus, I think, an associate tonight.
Okay, so that's good. Thank you. Just a few clarification before we start this hearing. For you who hasn't been to hearings like this, this is how it works, very simple and quiet. We try to operate as quiet as possible and civilized as possible. If you have a question, you just raise your hand, I'll take a note. I'll make sure you guys got a chance to speak. You only speak to the board, you can't speak to the applicant. All your questions and answer to the applicant will be directed to us. You have, due to the size of this public hearing, you're gonna have only five minutes to speak. You will have the chance to rebut to the applicant, so if you have a question, you're directed to ask the applicant, answer us, you'll have a chance to go back. We're just limited to five minutes due to the size of this. You will not speak without being recognized, so you can just stand up and start speaking. You have to be recognized by the chair. That goes everybody to the room, as well as the applicant and their attorney. Another thing, try not to be noisy, I mean noisy, sorry, and loud, sorry, yeah, yeah, noisy too. So, if you get very loud and noisy, the guy next to me will remind you that you're being loud. If you get obnoxious and loud, the guy to my left will make sure you leave the room. So, that being said, make, I guess, do you guys, anyone have a quick question before we start? All right, that being said, it's your floor, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, for the record. Peter Freeman, attorney, representing the applicant. My office is in Yarmouth Port. From the applicant, Dakota Partners, Inc., we have Roberto Arista, who will say a few words.
Can't hear.
I wanted to speak to the microphone, but I'll get up.
Chairman, I would like to see, the microphones on the right have not been working well for weeks, so I suggested that...
Counselor, when I move to the left...
The microphone's on his left.
Counselor, it has to be on the mic because it has to be, it's getting recorded, so...
Sure.
Let's try this one.
Take two.
Can you hear it? Can you?
Okay.
Hang on a minute, we got a guy giving...
You can't hear it?
You got your hand up, what's up?
Can you?
No.
Not now, we'll get to time, let the gentleman speak.
So, just testing the microphone, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you very much. Again, for the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, from Yarmouth Port, representing the applicant. From Dakota, we have Roberto Arista, who will say a few words. We have Jim O'Brien, who's been the project manager, whom I worked with on this project. From our team, we have our engineer, Dominique Rinaldi, from BSC Group, who is here, who will present the plans. We also submitted, but we don't have our traffic engineer here tonight, because we thought this would be more of an overview. We do have a traffic study that has been submitted, and of course, we will bring our consultant for the next hearing. We certainly understand and expect that there would be peer review on that and on civil engineering, and I believe you mentioned that Mr. Rowley is here, so that is all good. My remarks will be purely introductory, including just a few of the legalistic things. Roberto will then speak, and then we'll get into the analysis by both Jim O'Brien and Dominique Rinaldi. So, the first thing is the three jurisdictional things under the regulations. As a 40B project, an applicant has to be able to be a limited dividend entity, and Dakota has complied by being a limited liability, I'm sorry, a corporation that will create a company that will enter into a regulatory agreement, so-called, with a subsidizing agency, which is DHCD. And so therefore, that creates the limited dividend component, as well as all the affordability restrictions, which certainly are part and parcel of the project. Next one has to control the land, and we submitted a copy of the purchase and sale agreement, so Dakota has the control of the land through the purchase and sale agreement. And then project eligibility, meaning it passes muster through a review that is honestly more than cursory by the state agency. DHCD has reviewed the project and made its eligibility determination in a so-called PEL, Project Eligibility Letter, or Site Approval Letter, dated January 19 of this year, which again was submitted. And so the application, without going through the entire table of contents, includes that letter, it includes a bit of a narrative written by the team and describing the project, some of the details which were, of which were read into the record. It's an 8.6 acre site, it's 174 units, it's six buildings. Just a couple of things I'll explain briefly, and we'll get more into that either tonight or in future sessions, and that is that we are proposing it as a phased project. It is proposed to be subdivided, which the zoning board has the power to do, into three lots, which will be the first phase, then the second phase, then the third phase of the housing proposal, and then a fourth lot, which actually complies, as we've drawn it with existing zoning, but a fourth lot will be carved out of the existing larger locus, which is not part of the 40B project, it's in a commercial zone, and the owner, the seller, who is the owner of the entire property, when they convey to us, they will not be conveying that lot, they're going to retain that for whatever they have a right to do under the local zoning. So that's just a very quick synopsis, which will probably be easy to understand when we go through the plans, and either Dominique or Jim will explain the proposed phasing, all of which are designed and intended to be self-sustaining and independent. All of the required components, including turnaround for fire vehicle access, will be within each phase. So, that's just an overview, and I would say that it makes sense, in my experience, to just not get into more details from my side at this point. Let's get right into the real overview and description of the details of the project from our team, and as I said, we'll start off with Roberto Arista coming up and making a brief presentation.
Does this microphone work?
Yes, just the name, Roberto?
Arista, A-R-I-S-T-A.
Okay, and you're a P.E.?
I'm not a P.E., I'm a...
He's the principal of Dakota Partners, Inc., yep.
So, good evening, and thanks for having us. All I wanted to do is really just introduce Dakota Partners and who we are. We're a Massachusetts-based developer and builder. Our offices are in Walton, Massachusetts, so not that far away. We were founded in 2006. We focus on housing, and we're proud that what we do is build homes for families that are, that they can occupy safely and affordably. Our properties are in three states. We have properties here in Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New Hampshire, and our territory is really all in Brooklyn, but we do go everywhere, wherever we can find something that we believe is a, is a, is a good place and a good project to develop. Over this timeframe, we've developed 200 million worth of properties, and our portfolio now is about 1,000 units. And we do both new construction, in this case, it's a new construction, kind of ground-up, but we also do historic renovations, and over the years, we've won preservation awards for these historic renovations. We are, we're very familiar and work with all the agencies in these states, and I would say that they respect us, and they would certainly give us a good reference if you cared to call them. And last but not least, because we own the properties long-term, we care about our properties, and obviously, we want a good relationship with the towns that we operate in. And we're excited about this project, and we look forward to working with you, and of course, the citizens, to make it as best that we can.
Thanks, and before turning it over to, I think Dominique next, just a few things to again help orient everybody, a couple of things. The site lends itself to dense development, clearly it is dense, but it's, it's a site that has existing infrastructure, sewer and water, and that's obviously an important part of the project. It has attributes of smart growth, which is not just a saying, it's the way planning has been going for many years now, because of using existing infrastructure, being near retail, so folks aren't just isolated in a residential location, there's places that they can walk to, and things like that, including, I believe, bus routes and what have you, so they can get around to various places. So it is, it is a good smart growth site, that's part of what Mass., rather DHCD, has found, they look at those things. Something else that I wanted to point out is the existing motel, which I'm sure you are familiar with, the existing motel that is owned by the present owner and operated. The intention is that that will continue to be operated until the third phase, I believe it's the third and last phase, so...
Excuse me, counselor, Wilma, can you keep it low, please?
I can't, I can't hear him anyways.
Can everybody hear, counselor?
Yes, none of the other guys.
Yes.
There are, apparently there are a number of people waiting out in the hallway at this point.
They have to come in if they want to listen. I mean, they could stand in here.
So, if I need to speak louder, I will, I wasn't, with the microphone, I wasn't trying to shout, but I, sure, you know, I'll be happy to...
Get it closer, get the mic closer.
Yep, so, so I was just pointing out that the existing motel will continue until the third phase, and that's one of the reasons to have the existing property subdivided, so to speak, and as I said, I think Jim will give, through the plans, a little more detail on that, and just repeating what I said, they are all self-sustaining and perfectly safe to own and operate as first phase separately, then the second, which would be with the second and first phase together, and then ultimately, the third phase, which would complete the project. So, those are just a few additional things that I wanted to mention, and now I'll call on Dominique.
Good evening, Dominic Rinaldi, R-I-N-A-L-D-I, with the BSC Group. We are the civil site engineers, surveyors, and landscape architects for the project.
Hold on one second, sir.
Sure. Then I'm sit down, then be quick.
We want to let these people get settled.
Sorry.
That everybody can hear. Is there anybody else in the hall that wishes to come in while we've interrupted the meetings for you? Because we're gonna, at some point, we're gonna not let people come in anymore.
I don't think that's...
Well, I don't mean we can't let them, I mean, they're not going to interrupt our meeting. If they're gonna come, let's take a recess, we're certainly not going to prohibit anybody. Is that it? Is anybody else in the hall that wishes to squeeze in?
I'm gonna stay out there till I'm called.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for trying to cooperate in, so that we can hear properly. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure, no problem, all set. So again, Dominic Rinaldi, BSC Group, out of Boston, we are the civil site engineers, land surveyors, and landscape architects for the project. So just very briefly, I will sort of walk you through the layout of the project over here on the board. To orient you a little bit, Cranberry Highway is to the bottom of the page with Redbrook Road, sort of bottom right. As you can see, we're gonna have two driveways, two two-way driveways, one on Cranberry Highway, one on Redbrook Road, for full circulation through the site. The project will consist of six buildings, as you've said, two four-story buildings, four three-story buildings, sort of ringing the perimeter with, with, you know, two to the left, three to the right, one up and back, as well as a community building, which is oriented sort of center front of the property. Parking will be distributed throughout the, throughout the site, there are 260 parking spaces proposed, as I said, distributed throughout, adjacent to all the buildings, and the center area is dedicated to open space. As you can see, we've provided walking areas, there'll be, you know, areas with benches, extensive landscaping. As part of the community building, we're proposing a playground adjacent to that for use for the residents. The project will be extensively landscaped, you can see some of it on the rendering there. I know from experience that Dakota Partners does do a very nice landscaping job. That, in a nutshell, is the project.
One thing which might be helpful to point out, Jim, could you go up and just point out, it looks like the piece of a jigsaw puzzle, but the piece that is not part of the project at all, nope, no, the Hanley Boatyard, that's not part, we don't own it. That's, in case you were wondering, it's a funny-shaped lot, to me like a jigshaw, jigsaw puzzle piece, but that's, I believe it's called Hanley Boatyard, and so that is nothing to do with the project, it just happens to be sticking up there in the middle of the rest of our site, and then the portion that I had mentioned, that is the fourth lot, that is presently part of the larger lot, but will not be used by anything for us, is what Jim just pointed to.
That's not your property, right?
It is part of the, presently, it is part of the land that we have under agreement as the whole parcel, but what it calls for is that that is not part of the 40B locus, it's going to be retained, once the subdivision takes place, it's going to be retained by the present owners.
For what future?
Right, whatever the zoning allows. We're not asking for any relief on that, other than what, you know, the simplest way to do it is, is to have it created now as part of this approval. And as I said, you know, it does comply on its own with, with the zoning dimensional requirements, so we're not looking for relief on that, we're just saying that while we're having the whole site carved up, it makes sense to carve up that lot as well.
There's nothing currently on that portion of it.
I'm sorry?
There's nothing currently on that lot.
Correct, it is still vacant, correct. And the motel, by the way, I believe, is on the far left, does that...
The bottom left area where the driveway on Cranberry Highway is, is the existing motel area.
All right, just let me ask, can, is all the fees paid for the application, everything else?
No, the application was incomplete with the fee.
It was incomplete with what?
The fee, the fee and the rules and regulations is...
My understanding is that we paid the fee, and when we filed, as well as we spoke to you, my paralegal spoke to you and we'd emails, that you have, based on the number of units, a peer review fee that would have been something like $20,000.
Twenty-three.
I'm sorry?
I think it's about $23,000.
That's fine, but what we did is, we're not being presumptuous in any way, we specifically addressed it in our application, and said we asked for a waiver from that amount, we paid, I believe, $6,400 or something like that, which I believe...
Five thousand.
I'm sorry?
I think it was 5,000.
Okay, well, I can get the exact amount, but we did that, you know, in good faith, and what we said is, and happy to discuss it, is, we always discuss it at the start of a 40B hearing, to pay an appropriate amount that will cover the, the expected fee, and, oh, I think what I'm thinking of with the 6,400 is that that, I believe, is the quote or the contract with Rowley, so we weren't far off by posting, depositing with you 5,000. You know, again, if you need a little bit more, up to the 6,400 perhaps, that's certainly fine, but we certainly do not view that as not being in compliance or having an incomplete application, it's simply just excessive to expect us to pay $23,000 when their proposal is 6,400.
I still, now, 53G for a professional engineer, Charles Rowley, that's different than the application fee.
No, I, my, I've not been told at all, including tonight, that we didn't pay the application fee, we did pay the application fee.
That's correct.
So the 23,000 has been paid?
No, the 23,000 has not been paid.
Okay, so...
That's not the application fee, that's the 53G.
Okay, okay.
That's the consultant.
All right, so timeout, so the 53G, they have 6,500 down?
They have 5,000.
5,000, and how much application fee for the whole project? And is it paid? That's what matters, is it paid?
Except for the consulting fee.
Not, I'm not talking about consultant fee, the application fee, like, for the...
Correct.
It's paid?
I think what Ken's trying to say is the consulting fees are considered part of the application.
Well, he didn't say that, if I may, he confirmed what I said, we paid the application fee. The consultant fee, which gets paid into a 53G account held by the town treasury, is calculated under your rules and regs at 23,000 for this number of units, and we, again, we didn't brush anything under the rug or not bring it up, we specifically said, both in talking to Mr. Buckland and in our application, that we thought that that was respectfully not making a thing about it, but we thought, given the contract especially for 6,400, the 23,000 was just very unnecessary to pay, and so, we said we'd discuss it with you, and we paid 5,000, again, in good faith, we paid 5,000, and as I said, that's not far off from the, I think it was 6,400, that is the contract.
Right, that's fine, but the bill might go higher and higher as we go.
Understood, and we have to make replenishments, understood.
Okay, so we're all good?
Yes, we're all good, until we get the consulting fee.
The 6,400?
Yeah, we have 5,000.
So you need another 1,400.
There's, there's more than, than that, there's more than Charlie Rowley's review that's going to be necessary.
Okay, so you're gonna start with 6,400, you put 5,000, another 14, and as they go, I mean, as the reviews grows, we'll, we'll ask you to put more and not fund.
Understood.
Okay, very good.
I think I read that as the account depletes and gets to 50% of the original amount, it has to be replenished.
Each board deals with it differently, if that's your preference, I'm sure that would be fine with us, just obviously through, through Ken or whoever else, just let us know.
We'll let you know when the account go low. Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I interject on this, just to maybe make a suggestion? It does sound like the, the application fee here is separate from the consultant fee, and I presume the normal course would be that that consultant fee would be put into a 53G account, Ken, is that correct?
Correct.
So, I, I think this does sort of fall outside of the Hanover line of cases in which found that the failure to pay an application fee constituted an incomplete application. In this instance, because it would go into a 53G account, anything in excess is automatically returned to the applicant at the end of the process, so it's a little bit less of a sensitive issue than if it was just straight application fee that the town would collect and hold in perpetuity forever. I do think that this particular project is going to be something that's going to be subject to a significant amount of peer review, from what I've gathered so far, in a number of different areas, and the sooner that you get those proposals out to the applicant and get that process moving, the better it's going to be for the board, because as the board's aware, under the regulations, the board has 180 days from tonight to complete the course of the public hearing and close the public hearing, and that time period can go very, very quickly, particularly when you're getting involved in very detailed and intricate peer review processes. So, the sooner we can get those initiated, the better, which is why having the money in the account now would help prevent any delays in initiating that process, but barring that, I think we really, tonight, would be a good thing for the board to actually look at what areas right now it thinks it's going to need peer review and commence that process tonight.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
From our consultant, if as we go down this road, we determine 6,400 isn't going to do it, we go back to the applicant and ask him to replenish the account?
It's written into our rules, as soon as it hits 450%.
They're gonna have to crank it.
And I, I think in this instance, you are going to be having multiple different peer review consultants, you're gonna have a general civil peer review, I presume, you're going to have a traffic peer review, I would presume, impacts to water and sewer, I noticed in the application that they are specifically requesting that the Board of Appeals grant water and sewer application connection permits.
So my question...
The board is going to want to make sure that there's sufficient capacity in both before it makes that determination, so there is a number, there are a number of issues in which the board is going to want peer review, it is definitely going to go above 6,400.
So my question to you is, once it's determined that more funds are necessary, until the applicant provides those funds, does that therefore automatically extend the 180 days?
It does not.
It does not?
It does not.
So if we don't get it tonight...
So, the way the 180-day period works, there is a presumption that the applicant is making timely submittals of information that the board can reasonably request, so if we're in a position, or, in, just speaking generally, for any application, if there's a situation where an applicant is not providing materials to the board in a timely manner, when the board gets to that 180-day period at the end of the process, the board's faced with, with a decision in which they're going to have to flip onto the applicant, and that is either, A, the board can deny the project for failure to supply sufficient information, which is risky for the board, but it's also risky for the applicant, or the board can request that the applicant extend the hearing process to allow for the additional review and the submittal of whatever additional information is necessary. It's very common for that to happen.
All right, very well, understood, good, thank you. All right, very well, so let's proceed, excuse, Charlie, have you had a chance to look at the plans at all? Excuse, Charlie, have you had a chance to look at the plans at all?
Charlie hasn't been, Charlie hasn't been hired yet.
Oh, no?
Hasn't been given a notice to proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I actually might have misspoke, but I thought perhaps Jim, Jim, do you have any more details, the architectural plans? Because you were going to present on the architecturals, but I don't see a board up there, so...
I can do the architectural and the phase.
Yeah, I apologize for that slight hiatus, but it was usefully utilized on that discussion. So Jim, why don't you go through the buildings themselves?
All right, let me, let me quick listen from Charlie. Go ahead, Charlie.
Sure. Just a very preliminary review. I haven't received authorization to actually begin the technical review, so anything I would have to say at this point is just a comment, rather than anything to do with the technical aspect of it itself.
I mean, there's no sense commenting unless you want to ask a special thing on the plans, to comment to them, make sure they have for you.
I do have a couple of procedural questions, and I'm not sure that it's, that this is the appropriate time for it, but I'll ask, and then you can decide. Part of the proposal is to prepare a, what they're calling a subdivision plan of the premises. One of the lots shown on that subdivision plan has no frontage. They're proposing to extend an easement to that property. This would be the parcel in the back. However, I'm not convinced that an easement is the same thing as frontage, so I guess I'm asking anyone with a legal opinion on this, whether or not the subdivision rules and regulations allow us to demand frontage, or whether that sort of thing can be made part and parcel of the waiver request. Because frontage, I think, is one of the statutory requirements through Chapter 42, 41. So I just need an answer to that sort of question.
The parcel, which one you subdividing? You adding it to your parcel, right?
Go back to the green plan, and Dominic, why don't, well, I'll show if you can't do it, but there are four separate lots. The answer legally, and you have either your counsel and/or Mr. Haverty, who I know very well and is both a good consultant and a very competent attorney, yes, we're asking for a waiver. There's no question. It's no frontage for that lot, and we're asking for a waiver. And under 40B, it's something that's within your purview to grant. And point of fact, although it could be, it, for the time being, if we wind up succeeding, it will be a lot with no frontage. Once it gets combined, which is certainly the very strong likelihood in the relatively near future, once it gets combined with the first lot, the first phase, then it's a moot issue anyway, because it's all part of one lot that is the fronting on the road there, so just...
So you don't have the 150 foot frontage now?
Not for that back lot, so you want to go through the lots right now?
Yeah, just, sure.
Go through.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Anyone hear me? Okay?
Could you state your name for the record?
Certainly. Jim O'Brien, Vice President of Construction for DeGona Partners. So here is a phasing plan of the project, where this is intended, this lot here is intended to be the first phase, which has the requisite frontage on Redbrook Road. The second phase will be where the motel is, in this larger piece of land, which has frontage on Cranberry Highway. So we'll be going from Phase 1 to Phase 2, and this is Phase 3. What we've done is introduced an easement from Phase 1 to Phase 2 for the utilities, connection, drainage, water loops, and the other elements that we found are necessary in putting the project together in separate phases. This first phase, I might add, is 63 units, two buildings only. These deals are done through tax credits and take time to fund each section. This project will be somewhere between four and a half to six years in a development project. We're not going to build all 174 units at once. We're going to do 63, 63, and then 48 in the back. So this will take about a year and a half, this will take about a year and a half, and then this one. So the three parcels or the three phases are here, and the easement is for a connection of utilities, life safety access, and things between Phase 1 and Phase 2. This is the commercial lot, which we left, standard commercial development, to the owner that will meet all the local building requirements as they come up. So that's the phasing of the process, the timing, and what we're intending on doing between the lots and the building and structure itself all the time. So I thought that was important to point out.
Yeah, all right, is the gray part, that's the first lot you're starting?
This one here that's striped at a 45 hatch is the first phase.
And how much frontage it has?
This one has in excess of a couple hundred feet of frontage.
Okay.
Then this gray portion here is the second phase, and this has 200 to 300 feet of frontage.
So the only question is the parcel in the back?
Which is Phase 3, and 1 will be connected to 2 by the time we get to 3, which is why we broke the phasing up in this content.
Is, let's say, we don't know if things go forward or not, but is it possible after Phase 1, you combine them all in one lot?
Ultimately, that's what would happen, no question. The way it made sense to do it development-wise, for the layout of the lot and all of that, is why we have that back portion as Phase 3. Part of that is candidly part of the structure of the purchase and sale with the owners, that we are not taking down the land all at once, we're taking down the land in phases as well.
So if I might be to just interject a little bit. The intent that when we do the developments will be, each phase will have a separate LLC, so technically we'll be in a separate ownership. And the reason is, there may be different equity investors in Phase 1 and Phase 2. So we hold these in separate entities, we'll be taking it down, as Peter said, in phases as we produce the project, but they will be held in separate entities most likely through ownership of the project.
Why, then you're gonna have three separate applications?
No, well, the, again, all good questions and fair points, and, you know, there are some flexibility built into 40B. In a nutshell, the applicant that will receive, hopefully, a permit, is the current applicant. They will create a first, single-purpose LLC with the investors for the first phase, and that is approved by the state subsidizing agency, I think it's already built into the letter, but they routinely approve a specific LLC to be created. And what the regulations now say is that the zoning board doesn't have to approve that, the subsidizing agency approves the transfer, and it's going to be related to the developer. It's not just like a sale to somebody else, it's the developer will still be involved with the LLC, because that's why they're developing. But the subsidizing agency, DHCD, will approve that, and under the regulations, we have to give you notice of it. So that's what would really happen in this case, possibly three times, if there are indeed three entities.
I want to, if I don't, you don't mind, I want to ask Attorney Haverty, right?
Yes.
I don't, I, I'm uncomfortable to work on a lot that hasn't, no frontage, but why can't you do it now? I mean, if the guy wants to sell the land, wants to sell the land, I don't understand why you want to do it like this. It's hard for us to grant a permit, and what happened if we grant the permit in the back and say he sold the parcel to someone else, how are you going to get access to it?
I understand the question, and we have thought about it, and I think for the moment, and I appreciate a heads up right from the beginning, it's helpful to share any questions and concerns like that. What we would like to do is to proceed as we have proposed, but understand that we will have to huddle and talk after tonight's hearing, and see if there is a way to adjust it. And, you know, I don't say that I think at this point that we need to, but certainly we want to be as cooperative as we can, and we want to make you comfortable. So I appreciate your expressing that you are uncomfortable at this moment. I can't just willy-nilly change the proposal at this time, but we certainly hear you, and that's why we have the give and take, and that's what we hope to do in the course of the next upcoming months.
Does my comment make sense?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a very fair point, that the board is going to want to make sure that if the parcels are sold to different entities or transferred to different entities, that access and the right to access is maintained for that rare parcel if you are approving it with zero frontage. There are certainly different ways in which that can be achieved. You can impose a condition, you know, that requires a specific easement to be filed before any construction is allowed to commence. Or they can certainly take another look at their plans in terms of how they're breaking this up and see if there's a better way to structure it. It's certainly something I think the board can look at as this hearing process continues.
And I should have said, I was going to wait till later, but Mr. Haverty is exactly right. Our intention, and I'm not sure if we mentioned it in the application, perhaps I should have, but absolutely, you know, if it goes the way we are drawing it up now, we absolutely will have the easements, and certainly that should be a condition, and we intend to do that, we need to do that, there's no question.
All right. I'm just gonna move forward. I want to hear from the town, if possible.
They had more...
If you'd like to just go through the buildings, we thought it would be helpful, and my fault for initially missing in the, thanks, Jim.
Yep, so we did a couple of renderings to show the board. This is the three-story building, the binocular that's tied to the south shore, and then this is the four-story building, which is obviously given another four, the lines are all very similar, the architecture and elements, both decks, transition, brick, stone, and the introduction of the set of colors are the intention for all the building presented off of. So we wanted to make sure you had the renderings, you knew exactly what was coming with respect to the building, the structure of itself.
All right, very good. Attorney Haverty, how, it's, to claim safe harbor with the town, is it from the date of the application or with the first hearing?
So the way the process works, if the town believes it has a safe harbor, it has 15 days from tonight.
From tonight.
To notify the applicant in writing that it in fact meets a particular safe harbor and the grounds for why it believes it meets that safe harbor, and it also has to provide that written notice to DHCD as well.
All right, very well, that's why we want to hear from Selectmen, the Chairman, Attorney Peter Tylebaum, if you can come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Of course.
Thanks. Good evening, Chairman Alclasi, and members of the U.R.A. zoning Board of Appeals. I'm here to report that last week...
Not too close, if you get too close, it does.
The Board of Selectmen authorized me to send the letter that was addressed to you and sent on Monday, and that I'm sure you've disseminated to your board as well. I'd like your indulgence to read the letter into the record at this time.
Yes.
Dear Chairman Alclasi, on behalf of the Wareham Board of Selectmen, I write regarding the above- referenced 40B project to express our concerns about the potential impacts of the project. The project, as presently proposed, calls for 174 units to be built, the majority of which would be multi-bedroom apartments. If an average of four people per unit is realized, that would mean the project would house 700 people, the majority of whom would not be current residents. It should go without saying that a project of this unprecedented size with an anticipated influx of several hundred new residents would increase our population by 2 or 3% within our small town, will have enormous impacts upon public services and infrastructure. Accordingly, the purpose of this correspondence is to formally request that the zoning Board of Appeals require the developer to pay for studies of the various impacts to public services and infrastructure, as well as peer review, in order to learn the extent and nature of such impacts, so that the zoning Board of Appeals can formulate the appropriate mitigation requirements should this project go forward. Among the public services that will be substantially impacted are, A, the Wareham Public Schools, B, the Wareham Police Department, C, the Wareham Emergency Medical Service, D, the Wareham Health Department, E, the Wareham Sewer Department, F, the Wareham Department of Natural Resources, Animal Control Division, G, the Onset Fire Department, H, the Wareham Fire Department, I, the Onset Water Department, and J, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, which maintains Cranberry Highway. Among infrastructure systems that will be substantially impacted are, A, pipes, pumping, treatment systems operated by the Wareham Sewer Department, as well as sewer capacity, B, wells, pumping, pipes, treatment systems operated by the Onset Water Department, C, town roads, D, Cranberry Highway, State Route 6 and 28, and E, electrical supply, telephone and cable systems operated by Public Utilities. On June 15th, 2017, following the developer's original presentation to the Board of Selectmen, I sent a letter to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development to summarize the board's concerns with the size, scope, location, and impacts of the project as then proposed. On November 15th, 2017, I sent another letter directly to the developer after their consultants made inquiries about capacities for a 240-unit project, a substantially greater number of units than was originally proposed and presented. I have attached these letters here, too, as Exhibits A and B, respectively, and specifically incorporate them by reference as part of this correspondence for your additional information and consideration. I cannot overstate the Board of Selectmen's level of concern over the potential impacts that the size, scope, and location of the project, as proposed, would have upon public services and infrastructure. I would also point out that we are gravely concerned about the level of transparency surrounding this project. In June, July 2017, during the Wareham Affordable Trusts, Wareham Affordable Housing Trust's monthly meeting, the developers presented their proposal to that body. During this discussion, the developers were asked whether they had spoken with representatives from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation regarding their plans, as Cranberry Highway is scheduled to be rebuilt soon, and clearly the project would have enormous impacts upon the intersection of Cranberry Highway and Redbrook Road. The developers told us that they had in fact conferred with Mass DOT. When I followed up with those Mass DOT officials responsible for planning and executing the rebuilding project, they informed me that not only had they not been approached by the developers, but that they could find no one else within Mass DOT District 5 offices who had communicated with them. Given also the inquiries this past fall regarding an even greater number of units, we would ask that you exercise maximum scrutiny during the permitting process. In closing, the Wareham Board of Selectmen respectfully requests that the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals require the developer to pay for the necessary studies and peer review so that the zoning Board of Appeals can fully ascertain the level of impacts to town services and residents, town infrastructure, other governmental entities, and public utilities. Such studies are necessary to attempt to mitigate the enormous problems and associated costs to the town and other entities that a housing project of this size necessarily would cause. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions regarding this or any other manner. Virtually yours, P.U.W. Tylebaum. Esquire, Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and that'll be the last time this evening we want to hear any...
We want to go forward.
...from the audience.
Thank you.
If you guys want to make noise, go out in the parking lot and make noise, this isn't the place for it.
I find it interesting that we're already in a discussion, or at least you are with the developer, about the cost of the peer review, and the cost of the, of the various studies that we're requesting, that it sounds like our consultant will be requesting as well. I can safely say I think 23 grand is on the low side.
Okay, well...
Thank you.
Apparently, if it goes higher, they're gonna have to pay it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I have to ask you the question, you guys have safe harbor? Can you claim a safe harbor, or are you working on it?
That I don't know yet.
All right, you got 15 days from tonight. All right, very well.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we are working on that. We've been calculating the area of the, of land that's associated with the town and the affordable housing projects that have been developed in the last five years.
All right, so you got 15 days, right?
Exactly.
All right, very well. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone, anyone here from, Mr. Campina's here? Is he here from sewer pollution, from water pollution?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, are you Mr. Campina? No, you're not.
No.
One sec. For what?
To rebut the selectmen.
No, one second, you will. Is Mr. Campina here, from the ward, from the Sewer Department?
No, I'm here.
Are you from Sewer Department?
Yes.
Can you come forward?
Yes, I'm here.
Take your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Name for the record?
Jim Jabertie.
Okay.
Chairman of the Sewer Commissioners.
Yeah, here.
Let me try, I'm bad with this thing. Jim Jabertie, Chairman of the Sewer Commissioners.
Okay.
Any better?
Okay, you want to let us know the concern about the Sewer Department and...
Well, our concern is that they're going to need to, we'll be expecting them to do a survey of the infrastructure from where the connection is now that they're going to be using or planning. Let me try. I'm bad with this thing. Jim Jabertie, Chairman of the Sewer Commissioners.
Okay.
Any better?
Okay, you wanna let us know the concern about the sewer department and...
Our concern is that they're gonna need to... We'll be expecting them to do a survey of the infrastructure from where the connection is now that they're gonna be using a planning. The expansion of that, whatever's gonna be necessary, are the pipes large enough to handle the increased volume that's anticipated? Will the pump stations between... that they go through to the plant be adequate to handle the increased volume? And will there be a screening area? There will be a screening area put in where all of this stuff feeding in would filter out, like baby wipes and stuff like that that clog up the system now, that we're working on a fog program throughout the town to eliminate this debris coming into the system and increasing our maintenance. And we would expect this would be done so that if there are sizing considerations necessary in the piping that has to be done, it would be done at the same time the road got dug up by the state. I think that's about it for the moment.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a letter from the Sewer Commissioner? If you'd like it read into the record.
Let's read this letter from Mr. Campina.
Date in February 26, 2018, from to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals regarding Woodland Cove 3102 Cranberry Highway. Attention Chairman Ekalasi. Dear Mr. Ekalasi, at the Board of Sewer Commissioners meeting on February 22, 2018, the Board voted unanimously to support the recommendation of sewer superintendent in regards to the Woodland Cove proposed 40B project. The recommendations are: A need analysis of the sewer pipes, manholes, pump stations, wet wells at Depot Street and Dix Pond Pump Stations. The cost for peer review by our engineers be borne by proponents of the project. Mitigation of grease and rags potentially entering into the sewer system and any other mitigations that the zoning board determines are warranted. If you have any questions, please contact our office. Sincerely, Guy Campina, Director.
Okay.
Do you have a letter? If you don't have it tonight, can consent it? We had asked for copies, but I don't think we got it. No big deal, but...
Mr. O'Brien, you want to say something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jabertie.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say a couple of points to the selectmen's comments so that the board understood what we had for communication and the process of that communication. The owner has several parcels that are in a taking discussion with the state, has many others up and down Cranberry Highway, I'm sure, we're in. We actually are involved in four different takings for the property. So Mass DOT contacted us, gave us a letter of the takings. We contacted their engineer about the highway itself, determined the taking locations, and then discussed with the project engineer about getting a lot of the work done for the project prior to them paving and completing the highway itself. So those discussions were myself and the project engineer, and they went down to the point of appraisal just two weeks ago, and they canceled the appraisal that morning for some other issues that may be going on in town. So we've had continuous discussion for about four, five months with the state in a capacity that they've asked us to follow, which is takings, the design, the curb cuts. We're trying to consolidate from four to three, which they appreciate. So we are in the context of working that. In respect to the units, I will say that the engineer, one of the engineer's staff did call and referenced 240 units, and that was a mistake by that engineer.
Okay.
We went to the selectmen. I introduced the project myself with Steve Kaminsky from my office for... It was originally at 225 units and a lot more four-story buildings. With discussions that we had at the selectmen's office and the feedback we're getting, we then reduced it to 174, which is before you tonight. So we have no intention of anything beyond 174. I certainly do apologize for the phone call that was made. The selectmen are correct. But that's our intention, and that's what submitted.
Did you start this curb cut application with the DPW?
They're in the taking discussion. I haven't been able to work with DPW yet because we have, as you know, Red Brook Road and Cranberry Highway. So we have two different departments we have to deal with simultaneously. Right now, we're trying to work through the four takings of Mass DOT first. And then to determine... We're gonna do a looped water main throughout the project. We have a connection out here on the water main, on Route 28, and then we also have a connection to the water main of Red Brook Road. Because we have a split at that intersection, we have both town departments and state to work with. So we have to deal with the state's schedule, and that's what we're trying to comply with.
All right, I don't wanna get into details on the plan, but quick question. How far is that curb from the curb on the highway?
From...
Here to the... To the... Yeah, to here?
Well, the...
Just a quick answer.
The state is doing a taking of a project, which is this turnaround that you may know is happening at that intersection. So they're taking some of the Habley boatyard and some of our property for that. Our curb cut, I can't answer exactly, but it looks like it's about 200, 250 feet from that turnaround that the state has determined it wants to lay out in the area.
Okay, very good.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Yes, one minute. I wanna go turn it quick to the boards, and we'll get to the audience, okay? So Wilma, we're gonna make quick comments. So can everybody can have a chance to speak?
No, I don't wanna make anything right now.
Jim?
I'm good.
Jake? Ken?
Is there a local preference for any number of the units? Or are they satisfied?
The two-part answer. We haven't proposed it, but typically, that is something that most zoning boards would like to put in as a condition. And we typically do that. It's happened on many other projects similar to this, and I've been involved with them as attorney. So, yes, it has to comply, not at this stage, but the state has basic standards related to the Fair Housing Act primarily, where they would have to approve it. And, you know, the town actually has to do some work with us at that stage to show DHCD that the 70% local preference is justified. But typically, a condition like that is not anything we would object to.
So up to 70%?
Yeah, for the affordable units. For the affordable units.
For the affordable.
And of course, the vast majority here, 60%, just over 60% of the units are affordable units. Maybe even more. I'm sorry if I messed up that figure, but, you know, it's... The majority of the units are affordable, so there will be... Could be a big local preference if indeed the people turn out to apply.
Affordable to people making 60% of the area median.
Right, right, right.
Okay, anything else, Ken? Cal? Nothing right now? All right, we're gonna turn it to the audience. I'm sure everybody wants to speak. Before we start, okay? Before we start, it helps a lot. If you guys like... Some of you know each other, make like groups, and have someone, one person speak. It gets to the point faster and better. And this way, you get more time to put your point across and voice your opinion and your concern. We could do this next time. But we're gonna start with the lady right here, please.
Say one thing, or we don't?
No. Is it... Yeah. Are you an attorney, sir?
He's from the Onset Water.
Oh, Onset Water, okay. I wanna take two seconds. I'm sorry. You could sit down. Ma'am, ma'am, you could stay here if you want. Go ahead, come forward, please. Sorry. I was... I had you next on my list, and I got distracted.
I'm Benjamin Hughes, Onset Water Department.
Yep.
And I'm Matthew Asta, a legal counsel to the Onset Water Department.
Yes. Okay, go ahead. Show...
We definitely have some concerns here, and a peer review, a third-party peer review, independent peer review is most definitely needed for this project. We have not been in contact with the developers until about a week ago. We had this pamphlet dropped off here, this packet dropped off. You would think a project of this size, they would've come before us instead of just about a week ago before this meeting. So a review is most definitely needed.
Definitely, yep.
And we have one other issue. So there's the issue about the peer review being needed because I think, as Chairman Hughes pointed out, there's a real question about capacity, whether the district has capacity. But then there's a separate legal issue. So as you all know, the Onset Fire District is a separate legal entity from the town. It has a water department. So the Onset Water Department is the water department of the Onset Fire District. And we've had very limited time to review this because we've only known really about this for the past week. But there's really a legal issue as to whether the zoning board can waive the requirements of the district. The 40B statute speaks in terms of a comprehensive permit as the requirements of local boards and defines those as town boards. I know that there's other regulations that seem to broaden that jurisdiction, but suffice it to say that at this point, we just question the authority of the zoning board to grant waivers, especially waivers as extensive as the ones being requested as to the Onset Fire District as a totally separate entity from the town. And I think that we would've drafted a letter and supplied it in time for tonight's meeting, but we really had a very short window to even be aware of this petition and be present tonight to present our concerns. And so going forward, we will review that issue in particular a little bit more carefully. And we may supply some further input to this board on that issue. But we would also request that going forward that the district be included in all correspondence that relates to this project because there was a meeting of town boards. I don't know the extent of that, but I think the local town utilities and town boards were aware of this petition much earlier than the district. And so we would ask that the district be copied on all correspondence. And for the local board members that are here tonight, we would just request that courtesy so that the water department can be fully informed and have the full amount of input that it deserves to have for this project. It's a major expansion of the water supply that's being requested. I don't know in terms of a percentage, but obviously, 174 new housing units will substantially impact the district and presents a real question about capacity.
All right, well, we'll definitely... I mean, it's a lengthy process. It'll be like, like you said, 180 days at least. And I'm sure it began... I'm sure they'll send you all the plans, all this. It's a... This is the beginning of it, and a lot of people are gonna be informed more and more and plans and references and memos back and forth. So we'll make... Well, I'm just gonna... Attorney Freeman, so you're gonna make sure you copy him for everything, for his... For plans and everything else. And I guess you could come to Tom Planner. I want to ask you a quick question. Is the Onset Water Department nonprofit? Or your profit?
It is a... Yeah, it would be considered nonprofit. It's a municipal entity. So it's a public... It provides a public water supply. And it's independent from the town, but it's a governmental body. It was created by special acts of the legislature back in the early 1900s. And...
So my question is, at the end of the year, let's say you have a million-dollar profit. You give them back to the water users? Or you just keep them?
In terms of profits, maybe?
Yeah, it's... The Acts of 1924 state that you either have to use it to repay bonds, notes, infrastructure, or it goes back to the taxpayers.
All right. Okay, points well taken. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you can have one of the legal people in the room address this question because I think it has been addressed previously.
I would like to address that, and Mr. Haverthi certainly can chime in, but there's a very specific legal answer to that question.
Okay.
If I could.
Got it.
Thank you.
Actually, that question as to your authority over a separate municipal district, such as the Onset Fire District or Water District, there's no gray area. We absolutely are correct in asking you to grant the permission to hook up in any related waivers. Both the regulations at 760 CMR 56 now say that. And frankly, more importantly is the seminal case that the Supreme Judicial Court, the highest court in the land, decided back about, by now pushing 10 years ago. I know it well because it was a case that related to a historic district on Cape Cod, of which I was chairman for many years, Oakings Highway Regional Historic District. And it was in the town of Dennis. The case is called Dennis Housing Corporation versus the Dennis Zoning Board of Appeals. And the Supreme Judicial Court ruled And the Supreme Judicial Court ruled that indeed, separate districts, separate commissions, separate boards like that, historic district, even though they may not be strictly an arm of the municipality in question, are treated just like a quote-unquote "local board" under the 40B statute. And they said that emphatically, and that applies to all such types of boards. The, to me, somewhat ironic thing, and it shows how compelling the court's position was, they applied a functional analysis, and the functional analysis has said, let's not get hung up about geography or nomenclature, or how it was basically created as a separate district. The fact is, it performs a function that municipalities typically provide for their constituencies and residents, which is providing water, providing sewer, in this case, I guess in this case, providing water. And they provide a functional analysis. The interesting, I use the word ironic, but I'll just say interesting thing is, Oakings Highway Regional Historic Commission on the Cape is actually a state agency. It is governed by the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, state regulations that were promulgated to govern how we conducted our business and the standards that we utilized. And as I say, I was chairman for 12 years. Notwithstanding that, which makes it sound like it's not local, notwithstanding that, the Supreme Judicial Court said, yes, it is local under 40B. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I do agree with Attorney Freeman. Local water districts, sewer districts, even when they are separate entities from a town, are still considered local boards under the regulation and under the applicable case law. That being said, the board acting as that local water district certainly has the right, and really the obligation, to review whether or not sufficient capacity exists to service this project. So that is the sort of information that I was discussing previously when I was talking about peer reviews, that the board may want to do. I think the board is going to want to request that the applicant provide a study indicating that there is sufficient capacity for water connections and sewer connections. Because under the regulations, the board cannot engage peer review to conduct a new study. It's only allowed to engage peer review to review a study that has been provided by the applicant. So in the first instance, the board's going to have to request that the applicant provide the information, and then it has the right to conduct a peer review of that.
And just so you know, I won't prolong things, I know you want to get to the public, but absolutely, we, you know, we agree. Anything that is a subject of legitimate inquiry in terms of capacity and all those things, we may perhaps quibble about how much study or the scope of a study, but absolutely, you know, Paul knows me, and I would say that my clients too, because I try to guide my clients, that is part of the process, we know that. And whatever legitimate studies and analysis is required to do to make sure that both the departments or districts involved, as well as you folks, are satisfied, we absolutely, we're not here to say, you know, tough luck or anything like that. We want this to be a reciprocal, engaging discussion, and we know that there is analysis like that that may well be necessary. So we don't gainsay that at all. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I will note, from what I had just mentioned, that there are occasional variances from that with the agreement of the applicant. And I've been on both sides of the aisle with regard to this question. I have represented applicants who have agreed to simply go forward with a municipal study that, for instance, if you've got a sewer department that is already in the process of engaging in a review of their capacity, and I've had an applicant say, we're willing to fund that reviewer to just complete their study and let us know how much is available. And I've been involved with regards to representing boards in which applicants have agreed to do that as well. I don't know if there is any such study going on with regard to either water or sewer, but I just wanted to throw that out there. Sometimes it's actually a way to conserve resources to do that.
Okay, we're definitely gonna have, request the applicant for peer reviews, so we know what we stand. All right. Thanks, Counselor. Ma'am, I'm sorry. What, oh, all right. Name for the rackets?
Lucille Godson, D-O-D-S-O-N.
First name, sorry?
Lucille.
Lucille.
L-U-C-I-L-L-E.
Okay. What's your concern?
My concern are many, as many of the people that live in this town. The one thing, I live right around the corner from this proposed development. I am on the Onset Water Depart, you know, like, they're my water resource, and I also get my fire services from Onset Fire. A few months back, I attended a Onset Fire District meeting, and we, you know, they, we voted for a new Onset Fire station. However, due to lack of funding, we had to reduce that new station drastically. And that was not even considering the fact if this should go through, and then that Onset Fire Department then has to service 174 more units. That's one major concern. Another major concern is, I remember reading in the paper a few years ago, that we are near sewer capacity. And as a matter of fact, the residents that live around the water treatment plant actually were getting headaches from all the different odors and you name it. So that's a concern, because then you add the pressure of all of this. The thing about it is, is Wareham is a community that a third of its population is senior citizen, that they're on fixed incomes. It's difficult. We have, our water's going up, our sewer's going up, our taxes are going up. And right across the parking lot here, there's a school meeting tonight, because again, lack of funding, they're proposing to possibly shut down one of the elementary schools, and then have to take those kids and split them off into other schools in town. So then you allow this to go in, what's gonna happen if all of a sudden the schools have 400 more students that need to be put into the school system? We, as a community, cannot afford to have this crippling our community. We just cannot have it. Along with the fact that, I went to the meeting a few weeks ago with the redesign of Cranberry Highway. And Cranberry Highway, we all know, like, it was stated that night, there's approximately 150 accidents per year, just on that strip of Cranberry Highway. And I actually got involved in one, right at the intersection of Cranberry Highway and Redbrook Road, where this is proposed to be. And even with the looms, I think they're called, this will not, Cranberry Highway, there's no way, say of 400 more cars are gonna be coming in and out of, between Redbrook Road and Cranberry Highway, even if the redesign does happen, it will not be able to sustain this additional amount of cars entering and exiting. It's just, to me, in my opinion, and I know others, it would be like the state would have blood on their hands because of the amount of accidents. Not to mention, okay, yeah, they're proposing to put sidewalks, but we have pedestrian accidents, we have pedestrians who have been killed on this road, and so this is, again, just future accidents and deaths waiting to happen, along with the fact that it will drain our community. Absolutely drain and stress out the people that already live in this community, that are already paying for these services, that we cannot afford this. We can't. Along with, it's going to forever change our town. The selectmen in Derrick have worked so hard to clean up Wareham and to make it a destination of the gateway to the Cape Cod. And this is just gonna cripple that even from happening. It's an insane, and I urge and I stress each and every one of you, don't give them one leeway of anything. Demand the money upfront. Demand everything. Don't allow that they don't have the frontage, they either get it, or it's not, it's just done. Put all the restrictions possible into place. At the very, very least, this is not the location for this type of a community to happen. And it's certainly not in our town. And I've got more to say, but if you think, just break it down, we already have so much affordable housing in our community. I know we're not at the 10% yet, but this town, I've lived here now for full-time 18 years, and my family have been here for 40 years nearly. And we have seen so much crime when developments of this size happen in our community. I can list them, you know, the names of them. They've had so much trouble with the police needing to be there. This, to me, is just trouble waiting to happen, if you allow this in. I urge each and every one of you to give this very serious consideration, because you'll be forever changing the landscape of Wareham. And do you really want that on your heads?
Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, please, you come next. You're next, sir. Come forward. What's your name, sir?
My name's Attorney Patrick Cook.
What is it?
Attorney Patrick Cook.
Yes, sir.
And I represent Mr. Richard Hadley, who owns property abutting this proposed development along the bust on the Cranberry Highway.
Richard who?
Pardon me?
Who's, who your first?
Richard Hadley. Richard Hadley.
Richard Hadley, okay.
L-E-Y.
Is that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Is that the, is that the piece that they refer to as Hadley Boatyard on their plan? Is that the?
He owns a property that's attempted to be represented on that, correct?
Okay.
Yeah. I, on behalf of Mr. Hadley, I share with you that he has reason to question the premise that they have control of the land. He, I've reviewed, conducted a review, the project update that was dated 6/13/17, that was on the Town of Wareham website. I also reviewed the Woodland Cove Proposal Drawing that was dated January 12, 2018. And just a cursory review of today's depiction, and I would offer that it appears that there are, Mr. Hadley's property and the boundaries thereof are incorrectly and accurately depicted regarding the boundaries of his property. I've communicated this to the petitioner only recently, and have not had a response to date. It is Mr. Hadley's intent to file an action to quiet title within injunction regarding further site work and subdivision thereof. And until that is resolved, we ask that the, that this permit not be approved or any subdivision allowed. Or, in the very least, that the condition be added to, that this be rectified, and any this inaccuracy and any and all other potential boundary issues be addressed and rectified prior to any work commencing. And again, it's very well this could be resolved in good faith work by both sides, but to date, this is an issue that we wanted to bring forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. But just before, before you leave, Counselor, this is, this is a civil matter, you have to take it out on your own with the boundaries? We cannot say the boundary is right or wrong, there's something you have to apply in court, on Land Corps, contest the boundaries, and do you understand?
I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you. I'm only, Mr. Hadley wanted this point heard, he wanted this on the record, and also, again, going to the premise of, do they have control of the land? I think it's a fair question at this point.
They do have, they do have, and that's on rackets, they do control the land.
And the question is, what land is that? But again, you guys have a lot, a lot of other things ahead of you. Mr. Hadley wanted his point shared, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi.
Name, please?
My name is Maureen Scartisi. That's S-C-A-R-T-I-S-S-I.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that I live in Indian Mount Beach, and the gentleman from Dakota Partners, I thought I had heard, mentioned that there was a traffic study, and I was just curious if the traffic study included the summer traffic? Because I don't know if any of you have tried to navigate around head of the bay, Redbrook Road, after Memorial Day weekend to September. I remember a few instances last summer where the, that road is a direct connect to the Bourne Rotary, and the traffic was almost backed up from end to end. I have gone online and tried to print off some of these renderings of the redo of the Cranberry Highway, which I know was much needed, but I just can't imagine what the volume of traffic would be like during the summer to add in at that corner intersection. And I live there. It's like you have to plan your food shopping and errands during the week, because you're virtually a prisoner on the weekend where you can get out, but you can't get back, because the Cranberry Highway and that intersection there is just terrible. Not to mention, my daughter went to the Minut Forest School, and I had read here on Wareham Week Two, that that school is being closed due to budget cuts, which means that all of those kids, which I would imagine probably would be several hundred, would be attending that school, which if you close it, would now be an added burden sending them all down to Deacon's or to wherever. But the traffic is terrible. Haven't seen anything, you know, online, I've tried to look about what the rendering would be like. And I want to know, when it says that there was a traffic study done, if that included actually coming down in the summertime to see what that is like.
Thank you. We'll ask the applicant.
All right.
Thank you. Counselor, do you want to, you got?
Just real briefly, in response to Mr. Cook's, Cook's comment, and it's simply that we don't know of, I asked my clients, we don't know of any correspondence from his client to contact us about anything, so.
You're talking about Attorney Cook, right?
Attorney Cook, who spoke for Mr. Hadley. In fact, we had tried to contact him as this process, as this project was basically being, you know, put together. So again, happy to talk to them. And then the legal point, which I'm sure Mr. Haverdy would agree, Mr. El Calasi, you're actually right, that it is a subject matter not for the ZBA, but for the courts to determine if there is a legitimate title issue. They have a right to pursue that, but that's a private matter. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel. All right, sir?
Mr. Chairman, did you want me to?
Yes, go ahead.
So just to echo that.
One minute, please. Go ahead, sir.
Site control is one of the jurisdictional issues under Chapter 40B, but it is an issue that is actually determined by the subsidizing agency and the issuance of a project eligibility letter. The subsidizing agency has issued the project eligibility letter, and the HAC regulations at 760 CMR 56.046 notes that issuance of a determination.
Excuse me, sir. So we gotta.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to.
We gotta listen.
Either take it out, or be quiet.
We can't hear, sir.
I heard what she said after the meeting.
I think.
Issuance of a determination of project eligibility shall be considered by the board or the committee to be conclusive evidence that the project and the applicant have satisfied the project eligibility requirements of 760 CMR 56.041. So the subsidizing agency has issued a project eligibility letter, this board does not have the authority to look behind that, other than if there's been a change in circumstance post-issuance of the PEL. So that's the only time in which the board can look at it and say, we're now going to question site control.
Right, that's, that's why I said, it's a civil matter, he has to take it to Land Corps. Okay, sorry, go ahead. Your name, sir?
My name is David Hurd. I chose to live and help my retirement years in Wareham, and at times like this, I sort of questioned my decision at that time. I presently serve as a member of the Finance Committee. I am a member of the Audit Committee, so I'm aware of the town finances. And I serve on a new school board building committee. So I'm aware of the financial stresses the town is under right now. Wareham is an affordable town, perhaps too affordable. And adding another 174 units of affordable and market rate dwelling units is only going to exacerbate our problems. Some of the big projects that we're facing right now, number one is the schools. We're in the process of designing new school, new elementary school for the town of Wareham. It's probably going to be a 70 to 90 million dollar project that the town has to undertake. Our water department in Wareham, just last year, approved, what was it, an eight million dollar filtration system, and looked at another 13 million dollar project to keep our water quality up to par. The Onset Fire Department authorized eight million dollars to build a new water, new fire department down there. We need a new fire department for Wareham, it's under grouded. We need a new fire department, a police department, excuse me. The existing building is way overutilized and in a very poor location. There are a huge number of commitments that the town has facing it in the near future. It would seem like an appropriate time, that if you looked at a large developer like Dakota coming in, and if they, they were clearing 200 acres and putting in houses, you might even ask for some compensation from the, for the town. Maybe a new police station that they could build, or a fire station. It's done all the time. You look at the developments in Plymouth with Pine Hills, now that's larger, of course, but they built a fire station right on the property. So it's not unusual for a community to insist upon compensation for things. Something to consider. The other thing is, it's very interesting, they're asking for you to approve a lot without any frontage. Good idea. Could I do that too? And how about anybody who comes up in the future and says, well, they did it, so I can get a lot without any frontage? I don't need frontage for that. Dakota Partners didn't. You've got to be very careful about that. Couple of facts. According to the Wareham Assessor's Office, the average house and property assessment in town is $285,000, and the average tax bill is $2,900. Wareham has 3,547 properties, that's houses and land that are assessed at $200,000 and less, or less, which in today's time, 2018, is pretty affordable. In addition, if you add the 18 mobile home parks, which have approximately 1,100 manufactured homes, almost half of Wareham is assessed at less than $200,000. Affordability, you know, if you borrow $200,000 at 5% for 30 years, your monthly payment will be $1,073.64. And yet, according to the new master plan, fully 40% of Wareham residents already have high housing costs, which means they spend over 30% of their income on housing. Wareham also has many rental units. You know that Wareham levies a fee on rental units, and the Board of Health keeps a tally of those units. According to the Board of Health back in December, Wareham had almost 2,000, 1,905 rental units. And according to the census back, last census, we only had 9,880 units as year-round housing. So nearly 20% of our units, housing units in town, are already rental units. Studies show the population growth is good for towns. However, that's only true if that growth brings in skilled and employable population, and the area has a surplus of well-paying jobs. People need a job. If you're bringing them in, they have to work. We don't have a transportation system, we, local to the highways, but we don't have a good transportation system to get to Boston or any other large community that has jobs. In Wareham, the largest cohort for jobs is in retail.
Get two minutes, sir.
Which makes up 25% of the labor force. So we're going to be hiring people, getting people in here, and the jobs they're going to be able to find is in retail. In short, Wareham can't afford this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Want to come forward?
Hi. My name is Debbie Ito. It's ITO.
Okay.
My neighbor asked me to let you all know that she can't be here for health reasons, but she's lived in this neighborhood for 32 years. She does not want this development to go forward. She feels that it would bring in crime, raise taxes, and like everybody's, by the way, I have only been here three and a half years, from my retirement too. And I was questioning it, but seeing the passion and the strong feelings, I'm so thankful I'm here. Last year alone, over the summer, there were probably, I don't know, several weekends where we couldn't even get off the street, because Redbrook Road was backed up, it was backed up, all the way from 628 to the Blombridge Rotary. In addition to that, just on my street alone, there was, my neighbor got robbed, drug-related. There was a person that was renting a house, was passing out in the street and on the sidewalk for several weeks until he was finally removed. And further down the road, there was a fire, drug-related again. So there's already enough going on. I don't know why that large amount of people would, why a development would be allowed to go in. In addition to that, this whole, that whole neighborhood was built as a vacation spot. There were a lot of people that aren't here that maybe would have some interest in voicing some thoughts on this, but they're not here because they're seasonal. A lot of the homes are seasonal, and the infrastructure was built for seasonal, and the people that are there are, it's an older community, a limited income, very fixed income, they can't afford, the taxes go up, can't afford any more water and sewer things going on. There's got to be some control in the growth, and it's got to be smart growth. And this isn't smart growth. And to stress everybody out in the neighborhood that's already invested, their lives and their families and everybody that's been there for so long, and even me for short time, and risking all of that. And when I bought this house, I didn't buy the house, I bought the neighborhood. I bought the atmosphere in there, I bought the amount of people, I bought the age of the people. So on a personal level, in addition to all the figures and numbers that have been thrown out, on a very personal level, I would please, please encourage no development at all. And if there has to be one, because we can't get out of it because it's a 40B, then at least minimize the amount of units as much as possible to make the stress the least possible on the neighborhood and on the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? All right. Attorney Freeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I take notes, I listen to both the department officials, board officials, and the neighbors, and I mean that sincerely. So we listen to all the comments, we'll certainly do our best to support everything that we've
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I take notes. I listen to both the department officials, board officials, and the neighbors. And I mean that sincerely. So we listen to all the comments. We'll certainly do our best to support everything that we've asked for. And at this point, we don't have anything further to present tonight, but certainly we want to get the peer review going as fast as possible as well. So that's where we're at. We'd like to do that and work with you and continue the process.
All right, thank you. I want our clerk to have something to ask.
We have this handbook, Chapter 40B Handbook for Zoning Board of Appeals. Obviously, this is a hot topic, and before I came here tonight, I read it, tried to absorb what I could. On the fourth page, under the sections that's titled subsidized housing inventory, there's no question in my mind that everybody's done their math and that this is a 40B project and that there's been committees way ahead of me that have approved the site, et cetera, et cetera. My question to you is also going to be an edification to the people in the room. As a board, we probably cannot stop this project. All we can do is mitigate its impact on the town. I think it's important that people in the room understand that. But my question is, this reads, "In rental developments," and this is a rental development, correct? "In rental developments meeting certain thresholds of affordability, the S H I, subsidized housing inventory, includes the market rate units as well as the affordable units." I'm reading that word for word. And as I read that, 174 units, my question to you is, do we meet the certain thresholds that would allow all of these units to be considered affordable in the S H I?
Yes, we do. In order for all of the units, including whatever market units there are in a rental, by the regulations, really the policies of D H C D, I don't think it's in the regulations, but the policy, as long as there are at least 25% of the units that have the households earning no more than 80% of their immediate income or at least 20% of the units where the, the income level is 50%. So we're in the first category because we're at 60%, as was said earlier. But we have well over 25% of the units for households earning no more than 60% of A M I. And therefore, under the policy that that guideline is talking about, yes, all of the units that are permitted, market and affordable, will count towards your S H I inventory.
If I may say, I'm sorry, Jim. I think Jim meant to do, does the town would meet, would the town meet that 10%? That's what it meant.
That's where I was going. I was just doing it.
I don't think it does. It'll be at 7.4%.
I think it puts us at 9.5. Is that right?
Right. I don't think that this project alone will get you to 10%, but it certainly will help.
People, let us, we can't.
Come on, we gotta listen. There's too many people. Go ahead.
We want to hear his testimony, not yours.
Right. From memory, and I'm sure Mr. Buckland can verify, I don't believe 174 in and of themselves will get you to 10%, but it'll certainly help in a meaningful way.
I did the calculation, Mr. Chairman, and it puts us in, with the whole 174 units, it puts us at 9.5%.
Oh, we're close. So that's good. All right, if I want, I want to call Chairman Tullbaum.
Sure.
Did you want to say something, sir?
Uh, no.
Oh. I thought you said you want. No, I thought she, she said, you said, I thought you wanted to speak. All right, sir, want to come forward? Thank you, Counselor.
Is this a live mic?
Yes.
Vincent Simone, East Wareham, Precinct 2. I'm looking at this, what's that called, rendering? It is very pretty. But my concern is about the scale of this in a town the size of Wareham. The heyday for 100, 200, 300 unit low and moderate income housing was 1950. And what they found is, over a period of time, that those, they started out being developments. Later, they were called projects. They deteriorated. So by the late 1960s, they were tearing them down. In some cases, they were actually blowing them up, getting rid of them. There was a lot of finger pointing after that about who was to blame. Some blamed the developers, the management team, local government, state, federal government. Some went so far as to even blame the residents. But what they found was that the sheer size and the isolation that comes with 100 or 200 unit facility is basically the problem at hand. What they decided, and what's been done since the 70s, is instead of building two or 300 unit facilities like this one, they build clusters of low and moderate income housing in established neighborhoods so that the people in that housing connect with the neighborhood, they connect with their community, their children play together, they go to school together. And it, you had void and isolation that happens in something like this. The location of this facility, if I'm not mistaken, it's somewhere near the 711 store, heading east, okay? And I understand it's a big, open sandy lot, and it's very tempting to build on it. But I really think we should reconsider something of this scale. I think this should be put back on the shelf. And what we need is an approach to low and moderate income housing that better suits the needs of the people who live in it, of their friends, their neighbors, the community. Something that, instead of worrying about the decline of something like this, give the town something that it can be proud of 10, 20, and 30 years down the road. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments.
Who else want to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Dillon, D I L L O N.
Okay.
My question is really about transparency and information availability. I'm not familiar with the website, and I apologize for that. What I understand from the attorney is there are variances being requested, correct?
Is there what?
Variances are being requested?
No.
Waivers.
Waivers.
I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Okay. Is there really available a list of the planning development requirements? Which waivers are being requested? Will there be a place we can go to, website, whatever, and simply take a look at the requirements, the studies, and peer reviews and results? That's the question.
Well, you could, if you can come to the Planning Board office, he can. He'll give you the application. And the table, too, shows the requested waivers they ask him. It will be a book like this. You could review it. Do you have an excellent?
Yeah, we also have electronic copies, and I think what we'll do is we'll put them on the town website as well.
That'd be great. Just for everybody's availability.
And then you could go out and, you could go online and check the waivers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, as I discussed, as I said before, it'd be very helpful if you guys get into groups and put all your thoughts together and try to come up with very, like, solid things as numbers, as facts. These things will help. I do understand you're concerned, you lived here 20 years, you pay your taxes, this and that. But unfortunately, sometimes this doesn't get you anywhere. It's very important if you could come up with some facts and numbers that really help with that, in that hearing. So I'm just trying to help out. And like I said, if you get like five, six of you and one speaker on your behalf, it works much better than each one have a think. And Counselor?
No, we don't have anything further. You know, like to, again, work with you, whatever you want in terms of wrapping up tonight.
You know what I was looking for? Was your pro forma?
We didn't include it because one does not include it. That's part of the process that D H C D, in this case, the subsidizing agency, goes through. We have no problem actually sharing it, but just the way the rules work, so you know. And again, Mr. Haverty can corroborate, or perhaps if I explain unclearly, he can correct me. But in a nutshell, it's not part of the application. That's part of the review by the subsidizing agency. If in the course of the hearings, you believe that you have to do something by way of a condition or by way of a reduction of units, and we say, gee, that makes the project uneconomic, then at that point, you do have the right, I'm not going to brush it under the rug, you would have the right at that point to say, we'd like to look at the pro forma. And if you feel as though you want a financial peer review, you also would have the right at that point to do that. So, you know, we're certainly not in any way trying to, you know, hide that. That's just how it works.
Well, we definitely, I mean, aren't we have the right to, Attorney Haverty, to look at a pro forma?
We're better off to.
Mr. Chairman, it's not that you don't have the right to look at a pro forma. The time for a pro forma review is actually prescribed by the regulations. In 760 CMR 56.056, addresses review of financial statements. It states, "A board may request to review the pro forma or other financial statements for a project only after the following preconditions have been met. One, other consultant review has been completed. Two, the applicant is at an opportunity to modify its original proposal to address issues raised. Three, the board is at an opportunity to propose conditions to mitigate the project's impacts and to consider requested waivers. And four, the applicant has indicated it does not agree to the proposed conditions or waiver denials because they would render the project uneconomic." The applicant was required to submit a pro forma as part of their project eligibility application. That is a public record. We can ask the applicant to provide that, or we can simply request a copy of it from the subsidizing agency. But review of that pro forma is not allowed to happen until the end of the process.
Well, my, my question for pro forma is, on a tenant, on a rental property, the, the maximum, maximum of profit, I believe it's 10% in equity a year, isn't it?
The Housing Appeals Committee has kind of muddled that. And the way it is right now, it's actually, there's a guideline that sets the, the profit limitation at four and a half basis points above the 10-year treasury yield, which right now is a little over 7%. It's probably around 7.2%, depending on where the 10-year.
What I'm trying to take this to is, if we want to ask the applicant to contribute to the sewer upgrade or to the water upgrade, how do we know his financial? He could come out and say, it doesn't become financially feasible.
And that, that is sort of what this regulation is driving towards. Is the first thing you need to do is do your peer review and make sure that there's a need for some sort of upgrades in order to facilitate this project. And if there is, then you can go to the applicant and say, we need you to contribute this amount. And then the applicant may say, we won't accept that as a condition. And then you can do the peer review to make sure it doesn't render the project uneconomic. One thing that I will say, and I have been misinterpreted in this statement in the past, but I, I don't find a lot of value in pro forma peer review because what I always recommend to a board is review the, review the project, impose the condition, the conditions that you feel are necessary and that are consistent with local needs. And then it doesn't matter whether those conditions render the project uneconomic or not. If you, if you have certain conditions that you feel we will only impose if it doesn't render the project uneconomic, then fine, you do that analysis to make sure. But if you're going to go through a process and go through a pro forma review, and then at the end of the day say, well, I don't care because this condition is so important, we're not going to get rid of it anyhow, it was sort of a wasted process.
I don't necessarily think, think we'll say I don't care, but, well, thank you for the clarification.
For instance, if there is a legitimate safety issue, so I'll give you an instance of projects that have, denials have been upheld because of a safety concern, right? So if you've got insufficient site distance at the project access, where it's simply not safe for cars to come in and out, right? And so you're going to impose a condition that says you have to acquire additional property to get necessary site distance, and the applicant says, we can't conform to that, and you're going to say, well, it doesn't matter. The project's not safe unless this condition is complied with. Therefore, we're imposing it irrespective of whether it renders the project uneconomic. In that case, you don't need to do a pro forma analysis to support that condition. If there are conditions that you think the board would prefer to have but are willing to let go if they render the project uneconomic, then there is some benefit in that analysis.
Thank you. Jim?
I'm good. I just, I wanted to point out to you, basically, we're restricted to health, safety, open space, and building design concerns. You know, when you, they jam that down our throat.
Right, but I thought there was some kind of regulation and restriction, how much you could make on the project.
There is, there's two, there's two aspects. There is an outside limit, if you go above and beyond, in which you have to kick back the money, you know, whether it's into the project or whether it goes to the town. That is sort of the, you know, the maximum profit level. But what I think the board's more concerned with is the, the level of what, the threshold for uneconomic. And that is based upon four and a half basis points above the 10-year treasury yield, which right now is in the vicinity of 7.1, 7.2.
All right, very well. So I guess, Counselor, we're gonna, just a minute, we're gonna pursue with some peer reviews.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There was, there was one email that you didn't read into the record.
I got it right here.
It came in today.
Okay. Let me, let me hear that lady. Ma'am? Come forward, please. Let's see what she wants to say before we read this. But there's somebody sent.
Somebody sent an email.
Hi, thank you. My name's Linda Sharp, S C H A R. And you suggested that we, as a group, get together and have like five or six people represent us and, you know, speak to certain questions. But most of the people in this room probably don't even know, you know, who else is coming here tonight.
It was just a suggestion. So like, if you unite your, everybody put their thoughts, and your message comes stronger. Just a suggestion.
The only reason I'm asking about it now is that before everybody leaves, maybe they can sign an email list. And I didn't want to just like yell it out at the end.
Right. So you guys could do this outside, definitely. It really helped. It would really help the neighbors and everyone else. It really worked good. Thank you, Counselor. So, okay, so we're gonna start with the peer review, I guess, Charlie. I guess, do we have to give him the go for Charlie?
Yes, we need, it's $6,300.
Okay, and do we need a vote from us for him to go or no?
You should, you should probably take a vote.
Okay, is that?
On that, on that, before we vote on that, on that vein, well, first of all, we have this letter that should be read into the record.
Okay.
But secondly, I'd like to bring up the fact that there was discussion about funds, but there was never, we never came to a conclusion on whether we were accepting 6,400 or 5,000 or that we wanted 23,000 and I think it's a point.
We do want the 6,400 requested.
Okay.
All right.
That's where we, okay.
6,300.
6,300. So you need another 1,300.
1,300, yep, we'll do that.
All right, can we read this on the record?
This is just for, you know, bookkeeping. This lady sent an email and it, and requested it be read into the record, and it reads, "Please include any questions or comments to the zoning board of appeal in regard to your meeting tonight. Please forward this if you are not the correct party. I am unable to attend tonight due to flu. But I would like to still voice my strenuous objection to, one, the project as a whole, two, the amount of units being forced down on the town, three, the terrible burden this will place on all our infrastructure at a time we are inundated with too many expenditures and no way to pay for them. Four, the location, which is too bust and not a practical location for this type of housing project. Five, the school system inability to keep a school open due to lack of funds. Six, the school buildings in serious need of repair or replacement. This is a ridiculous notion that is going to be a huge strain on our town and resources all because a so-called outside builder wants to make money off us. I pray if you can't stop this, then you find a way not to make it worth their while to continue this folly." Dorothy Turner, 172 Pineview Terrace, West Wareham, Massachusetts.
All right, very well. Anyone else tonight want to say anything? Yes, Charlie?
Just a, just a comment, if I may. The subject of waivers came up. And as I read the information that was submitted, there were many, many waivers being requested. And as I recall, the language, it said that they wanted to waive sections in their entirety to the extent necessary to complete the project according to the plans. I have some concerns about that. But to the extent that the applicant was able to conform to certain portions of the plan, even though it's maybe less than the total requirement in that particular section of the zoning bylaw, I'm going to be requesting, as a part of my review, information as to where they were able to comply, to the extent that they could comply, and whether or not compliance would really sign. compliance would really significantly reduce the potential for them going forward because of cost. So unless that's not an appropriate question to ask, I will put that in my review.
Right. Well, that's where I would like, for the next hearing we meet, I didn't have a chance to read them, neither did the boards. I read the waivers, and hopefully you come up on specific ones, what you're talking about.
There were multiple ones.
I saw them, there's multiple of them, but we want to see...
What I'm really asking is that the applicant show if they were able to comply with at least portions of it, that how they did, so that you'll be able to make an evaluation as to whether or not that's significant. For example, I think one of the waivers they asked for was lighting. And yet, I'm sure there were lights shown on the plan. If there are shown on the plan, is it in compliance in terms of the amount of illumination and so forth? If it's not, why can't they comply? And it's that type of technical information I would be looking for.
I would say, we'll come back next hearing, would you comment?
Okay.
And say, "Well, this is the waivers we can't live with." And we'll present to them, say, "Okay, this is what we..."
I'll do my best in that regard. I just wanted to let both your board and the applicant know that that's the kind of a request that I would be putting forth in my review.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I clarify that a little more? I think that a very good point is made with regard to the extent of the waivers that are being requested. The board certainly has the right to ask for specifics with regard to waivers, rather than waivers of entire sections. So if they want to do a waiver of, we'll go with the setback, I mean, with the frontage requirement, because we know exactly what that waiver request is, they want to waive it from 150 feet to zero feet. They have to specify. So if there's a setback requirement that's being requested, don't want to hear a waiver request that says waiver of setback requirement. We want to know what the requirement is and what their minimum setback will be. So if it's a 40-foot setback requirement and they want a minimum of 25, that should be specified, so the board knows exactly what it's voting on. That being said, the board cannot require the applicant to provide economic justification of each individual waiver request. The standard with regards to the economics is whether all of the conditions and the waiver decisions in the aggregate render the project uneconomic. So it's not correct to just look at them individually. You need to look at them as a whole.
Okay. Did you get that, Counselor?
And that's a good explanation, and we certainly agree. And again, I thank Mr. Rowley for bringing that up. By the way, one kind of just procedural point, I'm not sure that it needs official approval, but it would be helpful that if Mr. Rowley has questions, even in this first review, to contact our team, especially our engineer directly, you know, we always welcome that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
We like that.
I do that as a matter of course.
I assume so, I just wanted to state that.
If you could exchange business cards after, it would be great.
Thank you.
One other thing I would point out, one thing I would point out from Mr. Rowley is also if you see anything on the plans that you think requires a waiver that hasn't been requested, it's very helpful to point that out.
I'm sure he does. Don't worry. He sees things we don't.
Well, and I absolutely agree with that. That's, it is very helpful to have that other set of eyes. Because what happens if the board approves the set of plans with a waiver list, and there are waivers necessary that aren't granted, the applicant's going to have to come back and modify the decision, and creates additional paperwork the board would rather avoid.
I will copy all parties with whatever correspondence I can.
All right, very well. We're gonna, ma'am, you still want to say something? Can you come forward, please, quick?
I would like to say that while this process is going on, I would ask and really urge each and every one of you to go to the area, sit in the 7-Eleven parking lot, and just observe. Observe the roads. Observe Cranberry Highway. Observe Redbrook Road, what the traffic is like, what it really is like currently. Never mind if you allow this size and the amount of extra cars. Talking about safety, this is an enormous safety issue. Like I said, I got rear-ended. I got a bad concussion from this right at that intersection, and I was at a stop. People drive crazy. And again, this is not even thinking, I can't even imagine what it would be like, never mind about the summer, and I understand it's very true about the summer. We couldn't even, we had to just, you had to make sure you had everything you wanted and needed. God forbid if there was an emergency that you needed to get out of the neighborhood because you couldn't. Head of the Bay, Redbrook Road, was GMPAC. But the thing is, observe. Observe what that area is like. Like I said, you know, you want facts. It is stated, 150 accidents per year currently happen there. That's an enormous amount. And that's, we're only talking about a small section. And right at this area where this is, that's where most of the traffic accidents have happened. That's really a very serious thing to take into consideration here. At the very least, even if we have to have the state shove it down our throat, have it another 40 be in, I request have them move it to a safer location. It cannot be at this location. Like I said, it will be blood on people's hand if this happens. And you can quote me on that.
Thank you. You are Mrs. Dotson, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else want to add anything? Yes, ma'am.
One thing I wanted to mention is that now what's been happening is that the people have been getting off Route 25 at Exit 2, funneling down the Cranberry Highway and taking the left at Redbrook Road to the direct access to get to the Bourne Rotary, to try and bypass the eight-mile backup. So any day on a Saturday or a Sunday in the weekend, it's just solid, backed up actually onto Route 25, flowing all the way down through those sets of lights to take that left at the Redbrook Road. It's terrible. I urge, like Lucille, I believe her name is, if anybody wants to come out there in the summer, and this is the stuff we're living with every day, not even imagining adding something of this magnitude and that many of cars into the mix. Plus, construction of the Cranberry Highway, which I'm sure will impact daily, you know, driving.
Excuse me, ma'am. Whoever it is that's mumbling in the background, it's very distracting. Please stop.
Please. You are Mrs. Ido, right?
No, Scartizzi. You finished, ma'am?
Oh, Maureen. Maureen, okay.
You have another lady raising her hand in the back.
Yes, ma'am, want to come forward?
I was just wondering if maybe larger accommodations for people that might need to come, because again, we're all getting a little older, and it was difficult to find parking, and it was, there was no seating. It didn't get really warm, so maybe for future hearings, is it possible to have them in a larger room, where more people can come if they choose to, without being uncomfortable?
We'll ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very well. I guess we got to pull a vote to Mr. Rowley to give him that.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to have Mr. Rowley...
Become the engineer.
...review and take the contract for 53G for case 2-18 for comprehensive permit, Dakota Property 3102 Cranberry Highway. You have a second?
Second.
Second, by general in favor, say aye.
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 And you also want to have a process where we get the sewer and water reviews?
Traffic also.
Well, I was going to make a motion, if you will, that we request studies for items A through J of the selectman's letter dated February 26, 2018.
So you want to make a motion, peer reviews on public school police...
Just a minute, we got a comment coming from...
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend against requesting studies with regards to these issues, has to do with the impact to the departments themselves.
Okay.
That's something that's really outside the scope of Chapter 40B. Particularly, the impact on the schools is the sort of inquiry that can get the board into trouble. That's something that raises fair housing questions. If there is a claim that the town is trying to prevent school-aged children from coming into the town, that could absolutely taint any decision that's brought issues. It'd be a basis for overturning it, and it could cause other...
That's why I was kind of trying to pick and choose.
Now, but there is also, in that same letter, a request asking for reviews of infrastructure systems. And those are absolutely the sort of things that the board should and can request additional information and conduct peer reviews of.
So, if I may, through the chair, to our consultant, looking at A through J, I think you have it in front of you as well?
Again, those really deal with departments?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to...
There's a second section on the next page.
Okay.
That's A through E, that I think is probably the more appropriate thing to focus upon. So instance, the pipes, pumping, treatment systems operated by the Wareham Sewer Department.
Yep.
Absolutely, it's something that you should request a study for, and then you should do a peer review. The wells, pumping, pipe, treatment systems operated by the onset water department, same thing. Town roads, that's, there's a traffic study that's already been submitted. So I don't think you need to request any more information on that until you have your peer review traffic engineer review that traffic study, and let them be the ones to identify whether or not there's additional information that they feel is necessary in their professional opinion.
I got you. And then, do we need to request that peer review on those town roads, or is that just going to happen?
No, it's on the...
So there is a traffic study that has been submitted. It reviews the road system in the vicinity of the project? And there they have, they follow the ITE standards for doing these sorts of reviews, and the traffic engineer can answer much better than I can whether or not what's been submitted covers a sufficient number of intersections, or whether there is a greater, you know, net that needs to be cast.
So that would probably apply to D as well, Cranberry Highway.
Correct. So that's, Cranberry Highway is a state road.
Yep.
That's within the jurisdiction of the DOT. So we can give recommendations as to, the board can give recommendations as to what it feels is appropriate with regards to that road. But again, at the end of the day, you don't really have the decision-making power that the power of transportation does. Electrical supply, telephone cable systems, I'm not sure what the sort of concerns would be with regard to those.
No, no.
Other than, I believe the applicant's...
That's a private matter. This is, I mean, if they can't enough power, there's not enough power, that's them and N-Star, so. So we're gonna consolidate this peer review to A and B. All right, Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, the sewer department and the water department, basically.
But traffic also.
With traffic, we'll wait for the traffic study, and we'll address it from there, which they have.
The traffic study has been submitted?
Yes, it has.
I mean, we'll wait for comments from Mr. Rowley, and we'll go from there.
Is he reviewing the traffic as well, or are we going to get a separate traffic peer review?
No, he's not.
Oh, he's reviewing the traffic as well?
If necessary, we'll retain someone else.
You said that I can't. Okay.
Okay, like I said, if we feel necessary, we'll get someone else.
Additional review necessary, that's fine.
Thank you.
By the way, my only comment on agreeing to peer review on points A and B, certainly in general agree, but in terms of what a scope of work would be, it seems like there should be some review, probably by Mr. Rowley, or some more specific feedback from the departments in terms of what that scope would be, because it's stated quite broadly in A and B. So in spirit, I'm with you, but I just think it leaves some fine tuning in terms of what would be requested at this point.
I do think feedback from those departments would help focus with that review.
I would say, I mean, apparently with sewer department, there will be two things, the size of the pipe on the highway, and the treatment facility size. That's probably pretty much what it is.
Do they have the flow? Do they have the capacity?
I mean, that's pretty much it. So we'll have to hear, we'll have to want numbers, solid numbers from the sewer department. That will be a part of the peer review, as well as the water department, to see whether or they do have or don't.
So you're going to want to look at the distribution system, the pumping stations, and the treatment plant?
Right.
Would it be prudent to allow, to have these guys have a discussion with these departments to come to a more informed decision on what may be best?
Yes, I think in these types of projects, when a board is being asked to step in for water and sewer districts, which is certainly well afield of what you would normally be doing, the more input you can get from your own districts, the far better the process will go.
And what do you think is the best way to facilitate that? Making a general motion now that such a study be done, addition upon further discussions directly between Dakota and the department heads, or...
I think having your planner Ken sort of lead that process is probably the best way to go. So give him the direction to facilitate that, and I think that would cover the motion you need to make.
And certainly, the spirit of what you said, Madam, is we agree. We'd be happy to do that, to help, you know, make sure that we can satisfy those departments and work out a reasonable scope, sure.
Because certainly, no one's going to know, you know, what the issues of concern are better than those departments.
Yeah, I would be a little bit, that's why I'm a little bit concerned about us directing what needs to be studied in these areas.
So you think it's a little premature to be asking for studies at this point?
Okay, so we good with Charlie?
You think it's premature to be asking for...
Who's Charlie?
The vote for Charlie to take it over, so we all set?
You took your vote, right?
So it's all set, that's good?
I think the suggestion by, I'm sorry, I wrote down the name, but by the woman at the end, is I think with Ken to work with us and the staff in the interim, which I don't think takes any official vote, you know, you can help work with the staff and us, we'll do that.
And on another subject, the site visit. Under the regulations, the process includes a visit for the site. We'd like to have it staked out, staked out the property boundaries for that purpose.
Would you like to see anything else staked on the site?
The building also as well.
Building locations, perhaps the access roads.
The roads, the building, the access, and the square in the middle, the green square, and all the buildings if possible. Okay, I guess we're gonna continue.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to set a date for that site visit, or...
We're gonna have to coordinate with them, see when they want. I mean, can you give us? No, no, sir, it doesn't work this way.
It does.
Sir, okay, thank you.
I think the chairman is just...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, timeout, please. Can you please let us know when it's staked? Let Ken know, so we can know, so we can't just go apparently without stakes. So when it's staked?
Yeah, for a site visit, right.
It's got to be staked.
They're talking, so give us, give them a minute. Again, certainly, we welcome a site visit and stakes, you know, to help, that, I don't know.
You think you could stake it before March 14? Okay, very well. So as soon as you could do this, before that, just let the planning department know, Mr. Ken Buckland, so he could send us an email, so we could walk it.
Are you scheduling a formal site visit? I mean, we can stake it, but usually, there's then a specific date.
Well, we can't make a date unless you stake it.
No, I understand, but I assume that...
They're committing to staking it by a certain date, and you can set the date for something after that.
So you want a date? How about...
Well, if we're going to meet on the 14th, we're going to work backwards from there, don't we?
How about Monday, March 12?
Well, no, we said we would have the stakes by the 14th.
But 14 is the hearing.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you state that.
Sir, can you please be quiet? Let us do what we doing.
I didn't hear you state that. That's certainly fine, having a hearing on March 14. Can you do it before then, so that they could...
No, only two weeks of stage.
Yeah, no, they, yeah. So unfortunately, they wouldn't be able to do it. They need the two weeks, given schedule and time, so we don't want to, you know, unintentionally misstate, that's all.
Okay, so do you want to come to continue the public hearing for March 28?
That was a tentative date that we had discussed with staff, so sure.
I have to announce something. March 28, I can't be here. I was going to ask the board if we could do March 27?
Which is...
Tuesday? Or the Wednesday before, March 21?
We've got the room to 27.
We'll use the Italian.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not available the 20, I'm not available the 27th, the 21st is fine.
Twenty, how about 21st? So we'll miss the 28th, we come on the 21st, so two weeks in a row. Will my, can you make it?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Just next Wednesday, sir.
No, that's three, three months, this one, no. On the 21st.
Okay, so we'll have the 14th, we'll have our regular meeting, then the 21st.
14 and 21st.
If it matters to the board, I'm not available on the 21st.
Unfortunately, I can't be here the 28th.
And also, what about...
It does matter, but...
What about already, what about already scheduled public, you know, notices that have gone out, et cetera?
We have time to change them 21st, right?
Right.
Right. We haven't published them yet, did we? Or we could send them notices?
We'll have to send out another notice if there's a change of date.
We could do it on, it's gonna be a lot more than one hearing.
It's possible the hearing I have that night may not go forward anyhow, so.
I welcome Mr. Haverty being here, and it's totally up to you, but if it's the start of the technical peer review kind of stuff, I mean, he could certainly catch up. I'm not saying he shouldn't watch a tape or find out about it, but...
You want to push, I mean, I don't want to waste time and push it till April, and before we know it, the 180 days is there.
Yeah, it's better to go with the 21st, and I'll try to manipulate my calendar.
If he can be here, it's fine. If not, he can catch up the following hearing. So 21st, everybody's okay with that? Now, the 28th, we can conduct a hearing. I don't have to be here.
You want to, you want to...
But for this specific hearing, the 28th.
Specifically for this, and hold our regular meeting on the 28th?
Yeah.
Three weeks in a row.
No? All right, the 21st, we're gonna push everything 21st.
So we're gonna change the 28th to the 21st?
Very well, very good. That's what we do. All right, so can I have a motion to continue on the 20, and now on the 21st, so when can you stake that place?
By the 14th.
You're gonna have it staked by the 14th.
By the 14th, and when you want to schedule the walk?
Anytime we want after the 14th.
Well, if he says 14, let's schedule for Monday, 19?
That's fine. We might have turned the clocks ahead, but still, I don't know if you want to do it midday, in the afternoon, probably still shouldn't be too late, even though we will have turned the clocks ahead.
Okay, so what time? Any, any suggestion from the board?
I have a question. Is there any objection by the potential buyer of the property or the current owner of the property for a member to go there unescorted at any time after the 14th and look by themselves?
We would prefer a notice, and we can certainly accommodate times with our staff within the company, but I know the owner would require that we know about that and just accommodate the walk.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's set time for Monday, the 9th, March 19. We'll do 4:00 PM. That sounds good for walk?
Works for me.
Yes.
If anybody wants to attend, 4:00 PM.
What was the 21st, what was your conflict on the 21st? Is the, oh, that's...
I have another hearing scheduled in Newbury, but that's...
The 19th, what's, how about the 19th?
I mean, if you can't, you can't, so I can the 28th, so.
I am available on the 19th.
Okay.
Did you want me here for the site walk, or no?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll continue this public hearing for a special hearing on, well, it's not going to be special. We're gonna move our regular meeting from March 28 to 21st, and you let the other applicants...
I'd like to make a motion that we reschedule our March, regularly schedule March 28th meeting to the 21st of March.
You have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, so 28 is gone.
6:30, that's the normal time, 6:30?
Yes, 28 is gone, 21st is then.
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this hearing this evening until the 21st of March.
Okay, do I have a second on continue?
Do we need to, no, we don't need to...
Hearing 2-18 till March 21st, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hold on one second.
All right, is Mike Harrington here? Zero Squirrel Island, Ken?
No.
All right, guys, let's take it outside, so we could finish.
They'll probably, they want to take pictures of...
Let them get out of them.
Get better off.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, can you get out, please, so we could finish our business?
I will.
Can you take it outside? Jimmy, you scream. You're the screamer.
They're going, they're going.
It's too late now.
So do we have additional? We've just got to finish, still, see what's up with this.
Yeah.
All right, Ken, what's the deal with the...
There's no deadline on it. They asked for the...
Jay Donigan?
Jay Donigan, Ed. Ed.
Oh, that's the 3117. But that is, what they, what they were here for?
They were, I think they were looking for a sign-off, weren't they?
Mike Harrington, the certificate of completion at one, that's Zero Squirrel Island Road is for the solar farm, and they had asked for a review and certificate of completeness.
Okay, do we have a report from Charlie, from everybody else? Can you guys take it outside, please? So we could hear?
Did he submit security?
Please.
No, he didn't. He didn't.
Can't get a sign-off without the security. He had a list of things that he needed to do, and he was supposed to submit that along with whatever form of security he was going to present, so if he hasn't done that, he can't get a sign-off. There were too many grading issues and things that needed to be taken care of that.
We're talking about Squirrel Island, correct?
Yes, we are.
Correct.
Okay. So it's not done, it's not complete?
So I guess we got, you got to send them a memo, say...
It's not done yet.
Okay, so it's not done, so I guess, continue, what is it, continue it? What are we going to do with it?
No, you don't have to continue it, because it was...
It's a primary business anyway, so just let it go.